All right, this is Binghamton City Council Business Meeting. Today is Wednesday, January 28th. I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. Madam Deputy Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Porter is absent. Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Rathma.
Present.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Council President Dunham.
Present. Can I get a motion on approval of the last meeting's minutes, please?
Make the motion.
Can I get a second? Second? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, can I get all in, can I get an all in favor or vote against it?
Oh, aye.
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 That was on me. Um, any reports from committees? I'm gonna say, seeing that all of our committees have changed and it's only been a week, we will not have any reports of committees at this time. Oh, never mind. I guess we do.
Um, I just want people to be aware to watch the calendar. I'm gonna be working on scheduling a special rules meeting to start working on our rules book. Probably for next week.
And I would add for Planning Committee, we are hosting a town hall on good cause eviction this coming Monday, the 13th, starting at 6:00 PM here in council chambers.
Any other reports from committees? Hearing none, we are moving on to appointments. So for SEED Act, we will be reappointing Michelle O'Laughlin, continue as member-at-large. For anybody who would be interested in SEED Act that lives in District 3, please reach out to Councilmember Kavanaugh. Anybody who would be interested to serve on SEED Act for District 4, they could please reach out to Councilmember Hotchkiss. And if anybody would like to sit on SEED Act for District 6, please reach out to Councilmember Rathma, please. For the Conservation, or for the Commission of Conservation of the Environment, we are re-importing Darius Bang. We are reappointing Julian Shepherd, who we'd also like to appoint as Chair of that Commission. We are reappointing Laura Bond, and our new appointee is Nikita Robinson. For the Shade Tree Commission, we are reappointing Julian Shepherd. And for the Human Rights Commission, we are continuing to go over resumes. Seeing that this commission has been defunct for so many years, we are really doing our thorough due diligence to find the right people to cover the diversity of our community. I don't believe we have any public hearings to set, and there is no public hearing, so on to public comment. Anybody who'd like to come down and make public comment, you're allotted five minutes. Please come down and speak.
My name is Tim Sezny, owner of DeMun Funeral Home and Cremation Service. And I was here a couple of months ago to discuss the unhoused population that was surrounding our community and my business. One thing that I'd like to let everybody know here is that I'm still sick of not being able to sleep. Nobody in this room wants my job as a funeral director, and I know people in this room who have used my services in the time of their need. Since I spoke to you last, I've had, or at the night, right before, city, uh, city of Binghamton disrupted the unhoused individuals on the riverbank there. At 4:00 AM, the gentleman that was living across the street from me was screaming and yelling so loud that he woke me up. I literally was listening to him scream obscenities that would make Richard Pryor and Red Fox blush while he then committed domestic violence upon his wife. Why is it okay that I have to be up at 4:00 AM listening to this? And I ask you, how long would it take for you to call the cops while somebody is screaming those obscenities? Another instance that I've had is a woman that come onto my property and started threatening and verbally attacking my father. How many times would somebody, it take for somebody to speak to your family like this at a business that you own in this community until you had enough? Christmas Day this year, I had a gentleman who broke and destroyed my doors to the funeral home, came in, decided to make himself at home. I'm now spending up to $5,000 in damages that are coming out of my money. How often and how much money would it take for your wallet to be hit until you are verbally and physically pissed off and angry? I am sick of this. I actually thank the mayor of Binghamton for cleaning up the city and my side of the street because I am sick and tired of dealing with not being able to sleep. I am sick and tired of having to worry about the safety of myself and my family, and now I have to spend thousands of dollars for this. If you're sick of the city's actions for trying to clean up our community, I'm sick of having to be a doormat and a taxpaying citizen just because I live on the riverbank. The incredible amount of boarded-up houses that are vacant in this community and around, and we can't figure out a solution for these unhoused individuals, and yet I have to now be disrupted constantly. And it is so, so heartbreaking and frustrating that I continue to find a new place to actually build and create a safe place for people to grieve as a funeral home that does not include being in the city of Binghamton because it's individuals that are destroying this community. Thank you.
Okay, hello, I'm Julian Shepherd, 45 Moore Avenue, um, Hadassah's side of Moore Avenue. Uh, what I want to talk to you tonight is about a resolution that'll come to you from the, if it hasn't already, from the Conservation Commission, of which I'm a member. We voted after some consideration to send you a resolution, and the vote was five to four, so there was significant, um, negative votes. It was a, it was a recommendation that, um, the city stopped fluoridating the water's supply, the drinking water supply. And, um, it's been fluoridated for probably five decades or something like that. And, uh, we did, oh, thank you. Are you hearing me? Okay. Um, I, we actually had the, um, Director of the, um, of the Water Works to talk to us, and he was rather non-committal. He just said, well, he would do whatever the city ordered. I voted against the, um, the resolution because I thought it was, um, uh, too, uh, too strong a resolution. The resolution was actually to recommend dropping, uh, the fluoridation. I think we didn't have enough information, and I'll make that clear in a few minutes. But just let me, and by the way, I will abide by the five-minute rule, but you can curb me if I get too much. But I want to give you a little background. I think you all know that fluoridation was introduced back in the 1950s, 1960s, um, and studies at that time showed that it was a very significant benefit to, uh, for the dental health of people. And, uh, the, um, uh, the city, I'm not quite sure when they adopted it, but I think it was quite a long time ago. And they do fluoridate at the rate, and this is an important number, I'm sorry to say, but it's 0.7 parts per million. And, uh, the, um, it had long been known that there was a problem with excessive fluoridation. Places in the Western US actually, um, have significant, too much fluoride in their groundwater, and they have to avoid, uh, uh, drinking sort of public water supplies. But, uh, the, um, in, sort of in the last couple of decades, it's become evident that there is an impact of it on neural development, meaning development of the brain of children. And, um, the, um, this is documented at higher fluoride levels. And the way they've documented this is largely by just looking at populations where, um, you know, you can't do experiments on people most of the time, um, but looking at populations of people who have fluoridation and those who don't. And, uh, what they found is that, um, at levels beyond about two parts per million, so that's three times what we use, uh, that there is a significant effect on IQ. And that's, you know, there's lots of arguments about the effectiveness of measuring IQ, but that's one way of measuring, uh, neural development. The, um, uh, at the level, two recent, um, what we call meta-analyses, that's people who write, uh, write up reports based on all the published information and try to synthesize it together. But two in the last couple of years have looked at it, and they do indeed see that levels above two parts per million, uh, does cause a significant difference in populations who are using fluoride. And it's a matter of a couple of IQ points, but, you know, maybe that's significant. But significantly, they haven't been able to demonstrate any effect as low as 0.7 parts per million, which is again, what the city uses. So, uh, the advocates on our commission who were, um, in favor of, uh, the resolution that I mentioned, uh, argue that, well, you know, they've incorporated fluoride into toothpaste, dentists offer, um, fluoride treatments, and I believe there's been, uh, some school systems that actually host fluoridation, um, of the children there. The CDC, by the way, uh, supported this, they still support it. They actually rate it as one of the 10 best public health measures they've ever, uh, dealt with. The American Public Health Association supports it. And, um, but the advocates are saying is that these studies of, um, impact on neural health, uh, albeit at higher levels, nevertheless at lower levels, you know, there might be an effect that we would be able to measure someday. Okay, I, so I voted against the resolution because I wanted a resolution which said that we should recommend that city council consider the issue. Okay? And, um.
One minute remaining.
I wasn't against fluoridation, um, but necessarily, but, um, I did think that it was a viable issue that you should consider. And I consider it an important public health issue. We didn't consult the Department of Health before voting, but I did afterward, and I was referred to the, uh, medical director, Dr. Lazarus Garing, um, who I had a long talk with. And, uh, he said, yeah, you've, you've, you've got, um, this is a significant public health issue. And he sort of, um, said that the, uh, population of the city was in a, that the less affordable part of the, um, sorry, not affordable, but less affluent, uh, part of the population might be vulnerable to this. And, um, um, he, he was actually, um, probably in favor of continuing fluoridation. But I would urge that actually, uh, if you wanted to consider this issue, that you definitely talk to him, and I think we should have before we, uh, voted on the issue. You might also want to talk to city, uh, to, uh, uh, social, uh, sorry. What's the social issues department called? Anyway, the county, you know, social services, that's what I meant. And, um, perhaps even, um, part of the Dental Association or something like that.
Your time is up.
And as I say, my worry here is, is not that I'm against, uh, um, fluoridation of the water, I just think we should consider it carefully and a little more carefully because I think it is a, might be a major public issue for people, um, in the less affluent part of the, uh, community. So, my, what I would like you to do is when this resolution comes before you, as I would hope it would from the, uh, commission, that you would give it careful consideration and consult, uh, more authorities than we did about the issue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Due to the climate crisis, there are two key issues facing me. The extreme cold, and then we got the extreme heat in the summer.
Yeah, can I get your name and if you live or work in the city of Binghamton?
Elaine, I live over, off Old Front Street Road, which runs off Front Street. It's about a mile away, half a mile away from Morningside Drive and Hillside Motel, 690 Old Front Street. And I, my concerns about shade trees. I remember back in the seventies, they had awnings out in the warmer weather on these buildings that kept a lot of the heat out, and I'm concerned about the extreme heat when it comes. So if we could get, bring back awnings on some of the buildings, like business buildings, and bring back shade trees where it keeps a little bit cooler, because last year was hit hard with the heat wave. And in the extreme cold, I don't know what we can do about that either, but those are concerns that I have.
Thank you.
I know that close.
Thank you.
Anyone else coming down for public comment?
Thanks for your help earlier.
No problem.
Hi, Tarkabdelz, um, Tremont Avenue. Happy New Year to y'all. Welcome, Councilwoman, um, my councilmember. Sorry, I'm a little biased, you might be the best, but you're all awesome. And welcome, Council President. Love this. Uh, I just wanted to say congratulations. You know, the last administration and this administration talk all the time about their commitment to be bipartisan, and I just want to say congratulations for finally allocating 0.83% of the $46 million in ARPA funds. So like, way to go. That's a excellent demonstration of bipartisanship where the mayor's office individually selected 98.16% of 46 million, and you all lobbied like hell and fought like hell for that less than 1%. But, um, hopefully you can build on that bipartisanship by flexing your muscle, um, as a group of folks who are not in this for the pettiness, not in it for the theater, but who are in it to make Binghamton a safer, more vibrant, and equitable and just community for everybody. So I look forward to what's coming ahead. I don't think that there's a secret as to some of, um, my policy recommendations. Uh, I know that my councilwoman is going to advocate aggressively and passionately for improved housing policies across the whole ecosystem. I've always said that the foundation of a just housing system is a fair and equitable assessment. Maybe we can bring that conversation up this year. I know there have been some advocates and supporters for that. I also, uh, want to say that, you know, the, the gentleman that was here from the DeMun Funeral Home, um, I could definitely sense his frustration, and it must be very unnerving to have someone in your place of business or your home, um, that feels threatening. But, uh, and we used this funeral home for my father. Wonderful people, great business. But, you know, that's, what's the solution? Because, eh, the mayor, he celebrated the mayor clearing the riverside, and it just went to someone else's neighborhood to impact another business owner like himself that deserves more quality neighborhood conditions. But that comes through caring for all of our residents and finding meaningful solutions. And so I just want to encourage this council to think of other ways that you can change policy. I think many of you know I've written about how the IDA, they like to call himself the agency, just like Mayor Cram likes to call himself the mayor. But, uh, you know, they still give tax breaks to market-rate housing. And their own county housing study was clear that the greatest deficit was in the extremely low-income rental market, which is pretty much every community almost in the country. So you could pass a, an ordinance that says, you know, you won't accept agency tax pilots for any projects that don't include at least a minimum of 20% of deeply affordable housing, or even just ban pilots on market-rate housing altogether. Maybe set the stage. I know our county executive, uh, maybe needs to be pushed a little to advocate, uh, on that policy, but it would be a good one. We missed a great opportunity with the former Davis College campus. You know, it's just frustrating. It would have been an incredible place to have permanent supportive housing, to really bring in a lot of resources to help those who are struggling with homelessness, and instead we're using tax breaks for another, what was it, Riverside or River Gardens community with a gym, a theater, um, and market-rate housing. It's just, it's disgusting. So, um, when you step outside to take your garbage out these next couple of weeks and you walk inside and you're freezing, uh, just keep in mind those who are out there all night. Thank you, and I look forward to your work, and as always, look forward to being a resource, uh, here for y'all. Take care.
Anyone else for public comment? Do we have any public comments that were sent in by email?
Do not.
Seeing that public comments closed, we will move on to first reading legislation, and I will turn this over to the Finance Committee Chair, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
All right. First one of 2025. I'd like to motion pass O-25-01, an ordinance to amend the 2025 Binghamton Johnson City hourly employee rates for a CPI increase. This is the sewage treatment plant.
Hearing a motion and second discussion.
This is. All right, this the, uh, one of us at work session, this is a, the contractually obligated increase, uh, from the, uh, from the sewage treatment plant, uh, labor contract. It's, and the contract's negotiated. We are, it was decided quite a while ago, so. That's all.
Seeing no other discussion, Deputy Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Porter is absent. Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Rathma.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Dunham.
Aye.
That is 6-0.
Okay, and then we'll turn it back over to the Finance Chair, uh, Councilmember Kavanaugh for the next two ordinances.
Aye. Motion to pass O-25-02, an ordinance to amend the 2024 Binghamton Johnson City sewage treatment facility budget to increase chemicals and decrease electricity.
The motion, can I get a second?
A second.
Have an emotion and a second, any discussion?
So again, as we, uh, went over at work session, um, there was an exceptionally large amount of chemicals, uh, used in the last month. So, uh, they need to account for this, uh, in the previous year's budget. And they're, and they're able to find this money, uh, surprisingly, surprisingly in the electricity line because, uh, the extra solids have created more digestive gas, which lets the turbines run more, so we actually are saving money on electricity but spending more on chemicals. So, this is, uh, evening that out, uh, that, that, uh, budget wrinkle, and it's pretty straightforward.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. Deputy clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Porter is absent. Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Rathmo.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Council President Dundon.
Aye.
Thank you, that is 6-0.
And introductory to ordinance 2503, back to Finance Chair, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I'd like to motion to pass O-25-03, an ordinance to amend the 2024 general fund budget to account for over-budget year-end items.
Motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Have an emotion and a second, any discussion?
Uh, so this is, uh, looks complicated. It's, uh, mostly moving, uh, the first section is transfers from a variety of lines. Uh, I don't want to say that Chuck is shaking out the couch cushions, but he's sort of shaking out the couch cushions. Moving money from, uh, bunch, uh, leftover money in several different lines. Uh, some, uh, uh, significant amount from the, uh, the Fire Department Tier Six, uh, money we had set aside that we don't need anymore. Um, some temporary services, uh, something from the appraisal line even. So, uh, all to mostly pay for, uh, electricity, um, across several different lines. Uh, or actually, it's all, yeah, it's several different lines. Um, so that's the first section, and in the second section, um, we are using, um, extra income in the form of extra interest that we've, uh, brought in on, on our investments that is in excess of what we thought of. Some extra tax payments, um, and some state aid and, uh, federal aid, uh, to make up, uh, again, expenses for, uh, electricity and overtime, uh, that was used. So the electricity prices and some extra overtime, and I think this is mostly a fire department overtime. Um, and then we are also dipping into the fund balance. So our, our reserves, um, were a part of this. Uh, so this is kind of a piece that we need to go forward and pay some of these bills off now. As things trail, as they do a lot, we still do have some, uh, revenue still coming, including a large sales tax influx, in flow that we're, and. So we may not need to actually dip into fund balance as much, but we also have some other expenses, the trailing expenses that'll be coming, so we'll see. But, uh, this is, I think, the smoothest way to do this now to, you know, keep the bills paid and get everybody happy.
Any other discussion?
Any questions?
It's. Hearing none. Deputy clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Porter is absent. Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Rathmo.[1358.15]